Sand pipe, they have the same contract, final draft. They met this morning, said what final tweaks to it, so we don't have that to hang out. So, happy Ash Wednesday, by the way, everybody. Personally, I'm charging six o'clock. Religious thing, so move on.
I want to thank everybody for being here. I'm sorry if you don't have enough cheers, so I appreciate your patience. Let me explain how this works. This is a work session. We do not vote at this meeting. And we stay strictly to agenda. So when we're talking about a specific item, the board will go around and ask their questions and their concerns and everything, and then we will open it up to anybody here in the room. Like to talk to the top. So when we get to that particular subject, obviously, some of you are here for certain issues, and that's fine, but when we get to that point, we'll be able to have an opportunity to say something. Respectively, we're asking everyone to be respective about what they have to say. We're here to listen, but we make no votes or no decisions at this meeting. Okay? So that's kind of the general rules. I'm the moderator of this as the vice president, and we're going to start with Jeff, who has the first thing he wants to talk about.
Okay. You all remember, I'm sure, this presentation, Dr. Derek Salzberg. And he has a group of people that are skilled in community planning and data collection and analysis. Over the course of the time since then, we've talked, the committee has talked in a couple of ways. And yesterday, got a proposal from Dr. Derek to do some work for us. Since it came in yesterday, I have not had a chance to analyze it, or am I in a position to tell you what we, what I in the committee think about it? And we're not in a position to discuss the proposal. What I did want to do, so the agenda item was put on a little while ago, thought I'd go. So this is an update you could tell you, we're still working on the issues around comprehensive planning, and Dr. Derek, you have a proposal, and we'll proceed from here. So, that's all I can do.
Do you want to open that?
Not clear.
Any other questions for board members?
Yes. Phil?
Dr. Derek has won. Are there others that do this, and is this going to be a sole source play thing, or just Derek?
This might, the answer to your question is, I don't know yet. This is, this might end up being the sole source. It wouldn't surprise me. This kind of is, can be highly localized. The skills are different, and this particular group of work, be performed largely by graduate students from Salisbury University, and you're not going to find a wealth of it.
Right. No, the reason I'm asking was, at the finance committee meeting, they talked about University Maryland does it, or, you know, this one might do it, or that one might do it. Don't be stuck on Dr. Derek, even though he's the one that came, made the presentation. It was a nice presentation. But the reason I said that was, I thought that we may be time limited on him, because he uses students. So, you know, because he uses students, I thought that we were limited to school year, and, you know, and I know he said that he tried to do it school year, so he didn't have some students going out and some students coming in, so there'd be continuity.
You may be tactically timed, because the students might change. We'd set it up so they didn't change in process.
He did, he did say that. He did address that. He actually has influx of students coming and going all the time.
Right. Yeah, I remember that. I was wanting to bring that up, because the finance committee had said that, you know, there are other folks out there. We did have Dr. Derek in here. We are. If the time doesn't set up, then the times don't set up.
By the time I come back, if I tell you, we recommend sole source, I'll be like, if we recommend a broader bid, I'll tell you, and we can decide from there. We're, we're, this is one of those projects where there's urgency, but it's not house on fire urgency. So we need to move it along, do that, but we're not going to, you know, race out of here with sirens screaming.
And in saying that, they were also going to draft a letter to us to get this moving. So if it's already in, moving, I don't know that, you know, whether you still want to draft the letter, or, you know.
It's right here.
No, the letter from the finance committee to the board. That was, I was going to bring that up under committee reports. We'll discuss it.
Is there anybody else on the board that has a question on comment? Okay, anybody in the, I'm sorry, Jack?
Well, as a working session, is it really that formal? Can't we just open it up, or do we have to?
First of all, we keep it that members of the board ask all the questions they have, so that they're clear. And then when we're done, then we open to the public. Everybody's allowed to say anything.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Nope. Nope. That was it. You just answered.
Good. Perfect. Yay! Now, is there anybody in the audience who would like to be recognized, who has a question? Dennis?
Bill, we have drafted a line for conjunction, comprehensive committee, but we held that off until we received hope. And Jeff has asked us to stop that until such time as he has a chance to review. So that's what we have, yeah.
Okay, fine. I just feel, like I say, I was going to bring that up under committee reports, that we were expecting.
We're really trying to stay.
Anybody else? Yes, Pete, come on in.
Yeah, I have a comment. I happen to have been here at that board meeting when he made the presentation, and I asked a couple of questions at the conclusion. Some of you may recall. What I clearly understood was his saying to the board, "We need to get together, and you needed to define for me what it is you're seeking." It wasn't just a question of issuing a proposal. He needed to understand the objectives of the board. He really threw it back at the board, saying, "You need to meet with me, tell me what it is you want to accomplish, and only then can I respond to you by giving you a proposal." Am I, anybody, you all were here. Jeff, you weren't probably.
No, I was here.
You were sitting next to me, actually.
I've been here at every one of these.
Over here.
Since 2006.
Anyway, that's my recollection.
That is a recollection. It is, it is not a series of point events. It's a process. And we, the committee has given Dr. Derek some preliminary direction, enough to get down on paper, the start of a project, what a project might look like a little bit. We have more work to do. Board hasn't seen any of that, so they need to see that. And we're in, we're in the process, okay? The committee is, I think, more involved than some might have thought they would be, but they are. So that's being done, and we're moving along.
Good. I've been away, so I missed the committee part, so that's great.
Yeah, but you're correct in what you remember.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on in, Joe. I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point out, but I believe the gentleman here, he asked that before you do it, we submit specific questions that we.
Yes, he did. Yes, we have.
Second item on the agenda, RFP to lease golf operations discussion.
Well, it's my intention to bring forth a motion next week that we formulate an RFP, request proposals to see how many qualified people are out there, we'll put some skin in the game, run our operation. The second worst thing I think that half the notion finds is to have our golf course closed. And these guys will cope now with backing the market, and that's a very real possibility, because the referendum scares them. But I still think the worst thing to attempt is to continue to kick the can down the road. Now, if we leased that golf course four years ago for a dollar a year, we'd be over $10 a head. We leased at the yacht club in 96, best year we ever had. Far none. It was a lawsuit, fights, people getting thrown out, everybody hated it. Best financial bottom line in the industry. Anybody remember the best year for Turner's Grill? 2004. He stood out to Anna. And when I'm talking best years ever, I'm talking best year ever's by bunches. Anna was $404 negative, 2004, the year before we lost that eight. So obviously, we're not very good at it. And anybody that doesn't believe us, there are a bunch of us. So why not?
Okay, up to, just up there, I had sent out an email to the board after I had been approached by members of the community, our esteemed, Marty, others, contacts, I was asked, we have potential leases per session. I wrote on that, I have a message out to the board that was to be saying, "At our sessions, five minutes to power, each one." And each one of the sessions, as I should, had obvious that these two of them were a nice idea, which are bad, and when they get better, they will think about it. But they kept the door open. Their good business people are not going to close the doors, they never again. They kept the door open. It was clear there were questions and answers that they weren't. Then had two more sessions, one of which, interestingly enough, he sent you an email after they had spent 45 minutes convincing me that they.
They actually sent you an email?
Yeah, well, whatever.
It's cocky.
They, you know, they spent 45 minutes telling us why this wasn't the time. They didn't see, then they sent us and said, "Keep it open." I had since received another message, basically an article on how courses can stay open. They're talking about raising dues by 20% in order to keep it open to 2%, possibly a rate. The net-net of all this is, in making the motion, what realities are met with four, none of which have come forward with any of the three or four, which was obvious, that it's not just one, Ford is interested, he's an individual company.
I've got to interrupt you. One of those, two of those companies are very important.
Marty?
They are not.
Respectfully, he's got the force.
I'm going to go with Derek. Well, look, there is a difference between. You're not going to know until you actually put it up available. You're not going to know. And if you think somebody's going to, one of your golf courses is going to tell me I'm at the.
I'm not here to debate with you whether or not.
You don't have to. There'll be a motion we can debate.
Whoa, 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 what would be the downside of doing that? What would be the downside of adopting Marty's motion? What would be the downside?
Downside.
Is. 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 Is.
Look, we are just now entering the spring season. We have just now come out two or three years of construction and repair. We now have a course that is marketable to the package companies, to the people who might be bringing people here. For us to now, and it is not like we didn't talk to these people, folks, we spent an hour talking to them about what, were they interested? One of them opened this meeting with, "We're not in the leasing business, we're here to talk anyway." So the realities are, we have the sessions, we did the outreach. If we want to debate whether there's an RFP or not, the reality is, we are at a moment in time when the message to the community ought to be, and to the marketing board ought to be, our course is open, ready, stable, ready to go, you can book your time, we're not going to sell it out from underneath you, we're not going to lease it away. We had the sessions with the four people, you can make the motion if you wish, but I've been down that road, so I telegraphed, you know, where I'm.
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Wait, Marty.
Wait a minute. Tom has got the floor.
Oh, I thought you were finished.
I have. There is a big difference between somebody saying, we got on these calls, and people said, "Somebody told me you were trying to lease your course," that's how it started the conversation. All four of them, when we have the sessions, of course they were interested. They're in the golf business, or they're interested in being there. They're not going to say, "No, I don't want to talk." Of course, they're going to show interest. But then in 45 minutes to an hour, the numbers come across, you can't lie to these people, folks. We lost how much money last year, we're on a schedule to lose money this year, we've been tearing our course apart, we don't have a good financial track record for years in this course. You're not going to lie to the people as to what the financial picture was. So what the bottom line was, they initially were interested, they showed up, they paid attention, they asked the solid question. At the end, there was no, "Let me get you a proposal, I need more data." There was one who wanted to get more data, and then came and got it. And I don't, not heard a word back, except for one, who sent me the article on raising dues by 20%. I have not heard it back from one of them. So this wasn't a five-minute conversation, "See you later." It was an hour's worth of discussion. To the point where we're selling the fact that this course is coming online, it is in great condition, it's eminently marketable, it would be a good addition to your family. You know, this is how it was presented. At the end of the day, not a single one of them has come forward with a proposal, not a one of them has come back saying, "I want to continue to put a proposal on the table with you." So I went out, and this was the worst possible time for this to be going on, quite frankly, because we're just in the midst of trying to market and sell our golf course, coming out of dark ages, if you will. But much to the chagrin of many people sitting around this table, I went ahead and did what I was asked to do, and I did it. And what I got back was, "You lost how much money in the last two years? You lost how much money last year? You're on a schedule to lose how much this year?" The reality was, even at that, I was saying to these folks, "Look, if you are in the leasing business, if there was ever a time to grab hold of a golf course, it is now for ours." We just invested millions, not millions, but close to a million dollars in. It's in the best condition it's ever been in, and financially, here's where we are. I'm not going to lie to them as to where we were. Okay? Who suggested we lied to? Nobody.
Why do you keep saying that?
Yeah, right.
Because it was uncomfortable trying to sell somebody to lease your course, when you got the financial history that we've got. So the bottom line is, you asked, Jack, "Why is this a bad time?"
No, no, I didn't, no, that's not my question. My question is, quite simple, what is the downside of putting an RFP on the street?
Because you send a message.
Make it, make it plain and simple. No, Tom, you're doing the talking. Make it plain and simple, you know, what is the downside of putting an RFP?
The downside is, you send a message to all the booking companies, all the hotels, all the everybody who could get us the outside play that we need to have booked, keep this course going. You're sending them the message that we're in turmoil again. We're in the midst, you know, we're firing these people, we're throwing them out, and we're in the midst of needing to finalize the contract. We were going to do this, if we were going to go that route of leasing, which came out of the blue, we needed to do this months ago. That is why it's not the good time. Now, that doesn't mean that you don't keep leasing on the table as a potential out, out path, if you need it in the future.
So you're talking about timing?
But right, the timing is just, now, if somebody had come to the table and said, "Absolutely, you just got to fix in your course, here's the package, here's the deal, we're in the leasing business all the time, here it is, and in two hours, you know, in two days, we get a proposal," that's a different deal. The reality is, we were sent names to talk to, we talked to them, not a single one of them is going in at the end of the day, okay? But it doesn't mean they weren't interested to begin with.
He makes a good point, Marty. He makes a good point. I mean, you know, the timing wise, timing situation, it may be a little off. The thing that concerns me.
Vote no, kick it down the road. Everything I've heard.
The thing that concerns me. I understand. The thing that concerns me is, there seems to be a proactive individual in the community that wants to take this to the next level. Take it to the next level. He wants to take it to referendum. I don't think that would be in the best interest of the golf.
I don't either, but you can't control that, and I can't control that. It's going back. Anybody that thinks that Marvin Steen is rattling the sword is making a brave mistake.
I, it's funny. I'm going to step in. Right now, we are in season for golf. March 1st, as soon as this snow's gone and it dries up, they're going to be out there golfing. We're in season, things are booking. I do not want to send the wrong message to our golfers. They've hung in there with us through all these years, through all this stuff, and I want to support what's going on with these golfers. Now, again, to follow what Tom said, in the future, we, you know, that may be a situation we look at, but right now, I think we have a good, strong team out there, and I favor keeping it going.
Yeah?
Yes, you think.
Last year, I brought a photograph, a photograph, I sent it, me, just in passing. How come our parking lot's empty? And I would hear, "We're doing great, bookings are up, everything's fabulous." Where do you see the financial? Guys, we blew it again another year.
Marty, we had a course closed for part of the year.
It wasn't closed last year, but it opened. It was open in June, May, June, ready to go.
And we missed March and April and May.
And we had a.
The time, the prime, and there's a lot of golfers in this room. I'm a golfer, not a good golfer, but a golfer, and that's when they play, the spring and the fall.
What difference did it make? Had a world class, or anybody, had a skin in the game.
I don't disagree with the concept. I disagree with the timing.
Better go around, I'm still putting motion. I believe you're making very bad mistake, not at least pursuing this with Marvin behind us.
Bill?
I don't think anybody's saying not pursue it, but I don't think putting out an RFP out there to tell the world that we're looking for somebody to lease the course is, is the right thing to do. Now, you want to say that we were open last year, we opened May 1st, I sat there and watched them put down sod on April 16th, and sod's not taking. You shouldn't, you shouldn't be on sod for six to eight weeks, but we were on it, and two, two weeks later. So to say that, but you want to look at the financials, look at the financials. Right now, we're slated to lose under, or under budget by $100,000. Last year, $550,000. So we're almost $400,000, some thousand, thousand dollars difference.
Whoa, what a $100,000 over budget, man.
That's what I mean, over budget. Last year, we were $550,000. So we're, so we're almost $450,000.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Look, let me, let me love to say, I obviously, now, just let's see, Marvin contacted me, asked me if I would go talk to folks and about the interest in leasing. I said, "Yes." Good business guy, he'll say no to good opportunities. Somebody comes in here and shields us away from hundreds of, you know, some hundreds of thousands of dollars for the loss, of course, we don't listen. And we did. And we're already giving that letter of report. Let me just level set, folks, okay? It's $2.33 a month per household for what we are projected to lose at the golf per sufficient. What was it last year? Last year's whatever it is. I'm talking about what. It was $110 for each of us. Not even possible. We had $8,400. You lost $900,000 with the cost of the golf, 13, look at your audit financial state. Let's stop undercut, I mean, low balling, nothing. I'm not making up numbers, look at your audit. Can I go? Here's our assistant, "How much did golf lose in 2013? Audit, do you know?"
Sure.
How much was it? $536 in operations and four something depreciation was over.
Oh, you're adding depreciation. Depreciation, 101.
Sorry, that, you got to write a check for that.
The operating loss for golf was $536.
$536.
And $901. The year before, it was $288. Problem, of course, we all know the problems last year, but the answer was $536, excluding depreciation, which is how we measure the results of all of our amenities and operations. So that's the answer to your question, Marty.
Thank you very much.
When you add depreciation, you're right, you're in the know.
Anybody else around the table? Carrie?
I also am not against looking at other options down the road. The board has worked really hard to get the golf course to where it is, so this year might be a good year for the golf course. Casper's team has, has and is working hard to hopefully turn it around. It takes, takes a little while to get people back on that course, to realize how great the course is, and everybody that played that course last year had really good things to say about the course that got done. So, you know, the same thing is happening now. Your reputation precedes you. We needed to turn that reputation of that course around. We did. Put money into it, we, we got a good team there, and now, all of a sudden, all of this negative talk is going to take all of that good, hard work the last several years and just dump it down the drain, just with a, just with a few short words. And it's ridiculous, because people have worked really hard to try, look, Casper's contract is up, so we have to negotiate something anyway. So put all options on the table, but for God's sake, the season has started, Sharon says, let these golfers have their season on this great course, and then see where it goes.
Keep anybody.
Because it's, because it's showing people that we don't believe in our product, and what's, when we decided to do with it.
No, no, no. It's telling people, we don't believe we can manage a golf course, and anybody that's looked at our financial knows that.
Bob, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, it's interesting listening to the board. I've been deep in this for almost three years now. We talk about applying business life, business sense. We've made some significant commitments, capital commitments to the course in the last couple of years. $1.6 million drainage, golf greens. Interesting, people want to ignore the fact that for years, the USDA came in and told us that greens need to be replaced, boarded. And one of the things the board did a couple of years back was stop ignoring recommendations from national professional companies for golf, and they said, "Yeah, okay, we're finally listening, we're going to get at it, we're going to fix it." That occurred. We took a, a severe beating budgetary lies when we did that. What's interesting is, is when I sit here and listen, we've made all these losses, we knew, make no mistake, we knew we were going to take a beating when, when after all the greens are the same. We knew it. There was no, we talked about it at length, we didn't know how much, but we knew we were going to take a beating. So to use that year as, as a benchmark to say, "Well, we've made a horrible mistake, we should change direction," actually, contrary, you're making long-term investments, and we're making investments on behalf of the association with $1.6 million. We owe it to our membership to ride that out long enough to make sure that investment pay off. This short-sighted changing direction, two years into, sends not only the wrong message, it sends the wrong message to our partners in Casper, sends the wrong message to the community, that we made an commitment two years ago, just over two years ago, to spend all this money on the golf greens, now we're saying, "You know what, it's probably a mistake, we weren't sure, and we, we damn well were sure at the time, and we, and we should ride this out. It's a mistake to change that direction." Now, with Casper contract coming, well, let me give a couple of other things, just sort of what, use your term, level say. Our membership has gotten behind us, our golf membership, they have been the biggest ambassadors, which for years they weren't, and, and there's no mistake how I feel about it, I think they've pushed people away. Last two years, our golf membership has completely changed their focus, to a point where they're asking the guests that come and golf with us, "How was their experience?" And guess what? They're immediately sharing that. That's our members speaking on our behalf. That's our members speaking on our behalf. And now we're going to turn around, look at them, go, "Man, you know what? Your commitment wasn't enough." How about the Lifetime Golf members that made a commitment, knowing that we were making long-term investments, and now we're saying, "We were just kidding. Maybe not. We're going to owe them some money back if we change direction." We have Pam's Golf, Golf Getaway, all these packagers that are looking at us, and they're finally sending business of years of inconsistency. We finally have a consistent approach. We've made a financial commitment. Our membership is behind us, and now we're going to put a big red flag and go, "Oh, wait a minute. We were joking." I'm sorry, that's wrong. That's the wrong... You want to act like a business, we need to focus on the right thing, keep our course open, our membership's behind us. We've had over 1,500 rounds of Ocean Pines Association members that played last year, 1,500 people that play our course that aren't members. So we had even more of our members playing, not golf members, association members. And we're going to throw all that out the window by having this discussion of we should be considering... Here's what we should be considering. A one-year contract with Casper with some skin in the game, which is your point, Marty, where they have to perform as certain level. That's the type of negotiation we should have with a partner that's stuck with us through this massive getting push bill. So I think our messaging's horrible right now. We've made a commitment not owing to our membership, but to the golf members, they've stepped up. We owe it to them, stay the course a minimum of one per year. By not doing it, it's just, again, bad business for Ocean Pines, which, quite frankly, that's why every couple of years, we end up hurting ourselves, because we... Board changes flavor, and we change direction. And guess what? Inconsistency kills us at golf, it's killed us at golf years and years. Made a commitment, need to hold. Thank you.
These are all... I mean, they're good things. The problem is, what do we tell our members if there's a referendum? Passes. And anybody that doesn't think there's going to be a referendum has got to get their head out of this.
It's a great question. Here's the issue. We need to be honest about where we are, where we started, and where we're heading. We need to show them we have over 3,000 rounds booked in the spring for the first time in five years. We've got this May rounds booked. We need to be honest and give them the accurate information. I think instead of stirring it up, all this leasing for a dollar, stop that message. Let's say, "Here's what we did. Here's why, and here's our measured results."
Thank you.
I do have a question. So if there is a referendum, who pays? Who bears the cost of the referendum?
He will. He'll pay for it.
If he has 900 signatures, we do a referendum.
And I don't remember a couple of years ago, what's the cost of doing the referendum?
One of the messages that need to come across in Marvin's letter, which we've all read, is that, you know, his suggestion was to keep the grass cut, have it walking trails and parks and things like that. Well, also take the clubhouse and make it into meeting rooms and make it to an exercise room. What there's not coming across is the loss of revenue and the cost of keeping these grounds and buildings open. And what are people thinking? I mean, do you think the grass gets cut free? Do you think the paths are maintained, the building, the heat, and there's no revenue coming in? So these kinds of things, if this comes to referendum, then we're going to have to look at the situation and present the facts. As Tom has said, he's presented the facts. That's all we can do. And then the Ocean Pines votes.
That's right.
You know?
The points you made, Tom, are very good. They're solid. And the points you made, Bob, are outstanding. I think what we need, there's a lot of misinformation out, a ton of it. I think we need, and I'm not putting any onus on you, I'm not putting any onus on you, but both you guys sat in with those conversations, those individuals. I think this board needs a written report as to what transpired, what the facts are. And let's get it out in the public. There's nothing wrong with that. These folks are involved. Look, this course is an American treasure. This guy's dead. He can't design another course. This thing was done in '72. This course is probably a pure diamond in the rough. It's probably one of his top courses in the United States, because he was one of the top designers at that particular time in 1972. We have to protect that. As a board, I think it's our legacy to protect. And I just want to make sure that Marvin, though he may be well-intentioned, does not push us into a position that we don't want to be in. So I think if we get more and more information out, so that people know exactly what the issues are, and exactly who said what to who, when, and where, we can protect the interest of Robert Trent Jones course and Ocean Pines Golf course for the next generation. And get it off the tape.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And these people here, who are representing the golf interest, that feedback should come back this way. And we should know exactly how you feel, how strongly you feel about it, what you want to do to improve that course, to make it more successful in the future. I believe it is a team effort between the people on this board, the management, the president, and the management of OPA, and you guys, the members, to all come together and make this thing a successful, viable golf course that people want to come to. When I was younger, and when I could hit the ball 280 yards, I wanted to play this course.
We don't believe that part of it.
The people from Baltimore wanted to come down here and say, "This was a premier course."
I'm going to go on record. Still too good. Ball was...
I'm going to get it off the top of my head.
Jack, I appreciate it.
Members of the press, I've got information on this course. If you want it, if you want to run it in your papers, it's right here for you. Anybody else that wants information on this course, I've got it. It's a great course.
Can I ask one question of you?
Yes, sir.
Where are you a member?
I'm a member of Ocean Pines now. I'm going to meet with Buddy...
Where are you a member? You are a member of Ocean City Golf.
I haven't signed up with Ocean City yet. I haven't. I haven't paid my dues, Marty. I haven't.
But you've been a member of Ocean City.
I've been a member of Ocean City because...
Why are so many of our Ocean Pines relatives...
Because, Marty, 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 because my wife's relatives were founding members of the golf course. So I come down here, and if I don't chew in their golf course, my knees are broken.
That's true.
You understand?
I'm going to move my log. Okay, excuse me.
Let me wrap up this portion of this. Want everybody around this table, everybody that's running this... Did not close the door. Somebody asked us to look in. We said, "We did. We did it." And asked. There was nothing that came across to me as being disingenuous, out of line from anybody, be it Marvin, be it the companies we talked to, be it Marty and I talking back and forth to each other. We are simply trying to do the right thing for Ocean Pines, and we are open to the right thing. Right now, these are obviously my thoughts. Had someone been standing there, ready to go, maybe. Reality is, we did what we were asked to do. All of this energy around referendums, none of us sitting around this table can do anything about a group of people who want to have a referendum. What we can do at that point is simply provide the facts. That's all we can do. And what the impact would be and wouldn't be if such a referendum were to be passed, and what everything that goes around with that. So I... Obviously, Marty, if you want to make the motion at the next meeting, it would be great to. We'll probably re-debate this to a point. As far as the working session input, I want to update everybody on the other two sessions we've had. And at this point, there is no one coming forward saying, "Here's your offer." And we're in the spring, and it's time to put this aside, and quite frankly, focus in on the contract we've got to do with the company. We've got to get that done as a board. Okay? And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Are we going to get a written report? Okay. And I think it should be out in the public.
Well, I can't use names. We'll get it.
And I think Marvin's a reasonable guy. I really do.
So do I.
I think he's a reasonable man.
I have no problem with where Marvin is on the...
Jeff was next, Mark.
I don't play golf. I have played four rounds in my life, 1960s, but I have been a supporter of golf, I think. I think it would be foolish, ill-advised to have made all the investments that made in the course. And it's made. I mean, it's sunk. It's there. We paid. And then not see that investment come back by closing the course or anything else. We need to see how that works. If it works bad, then we can figure out what to do. Okay? I'm not opposed to anything. I'm not opposed to what we say. I just think now, it's absolutely wrong by doing. And so, my world to run.
Not my question. If somebody... I mean, we can't expect somebody to give us the best shot, have us come back and... It's not...
Is there anybody else around the table? Okay, now, Anna, your question is not about the golf...
It's about the country club.
It's the country club. It is not appropriate, Anna, it's not appropriate for today. So I'm sorry. We've already had this discussion. This is a golf... No. No, I'm sorry.
You can't speak about the closing of the golf club? I can... Can I remark on that? I don't know why not.
Anna, this is about our contract with the golf. Okay, this is a different subject. I apologize. We've already talked about that. I'm sorry. Now, anybody else that would like to talk? Would you please mention your... I should have told you, we need your name and your address.
Name's Richard Neiman. But, um, I've been a property owner for three years. Well, I appreciate a golfer I never knew 40 years ago. From what I see, the trend in golf, and I'm not a golfer, okay, I'm representing maybe the other side. I don't want anybody throwing golf balls at your home. But I'd just like to offer perspective from 30 years' worth of being in Ocean Pines. If you look at that board against the wall right over there, every one of those boards dealt with the same issue. We have proven, as Ocean Pines Association, that we cannot properly run a golf course in 30 years' time. May change on the 31st year. I appreciate Bob's optimism. I'm the counter to Bob a lot of times, okay? But I'd just like you to think about it. You talked about wonderful course. It might be a great course, and you know, it might be a great any problem. But if people aren't buying it, you as a board have to decide one real thing. Well, two things. One is, how much will we subsidize golf loss this year? Number two, who are going to pay the subsidies? Now, right now, I think the bulk of the subsidies are paid by non-golfers. So I too, if Marty gets going, I just... It won't be a board with golfers. It won't be the golfers. It's going to be 19,000 people doing a vote, or 8,500, I'm sorry, roughly, doing a vote personally.
It's not Marty, Bob.
Not... I mean Marvin. You know, you look so much like him.
He's much better looking than I am.
But I really think you have to think... I have sat through many of these things off and on. We've restructured golf. We've done it. I don't doubt that maybe the course is in its best shape ever. I don't doubt... Accounting, sunk cost to sunk cost. Now, if you found out that you're selling best carburetor in the world, and everybody's going to fuel injection, it doesn't make a damn bit of difference. You call that sunk cost, and you move on. I'm not telling you what to do, but I think you're going to be forced to do something pretty serious pretty soon. Now, I'm almost exceeding my five minutes, or whatever you say, but I watched the same thing with my aunt in a place called Phoenix, where you can play a year round. Golf in Phoenix was the same as golf here. 40 years ago, this was a premier course, probably the only damn course down here, you know? But they built so many courses around, we have proven we can't compete. Now, he was a homeowner in a homeowners association. He sat right on the golf course. He got the wonderful sprinkles on his house every afternoon, cooled them down. They ran into the same situation. First, the golfers decided they're going to buy it. Then they couldn't come up with the money. They were actually able to sell their course, and it sold twice before it ceased to become a course. The question is, is whether you as a board are ready to do, take a hard look, but you got to make that decision, is whether or not you're going to continue to subsidize the loss, in my opinion. And if so, who is going to do that subsidy? Is it going to be the everyday homeowner? Or are you going to raise the price so high on golf that they can't even afford it? By the way, in the past, the way Ocean Pines is, if they're losing money, they always raise the cost. I mean, they always raise the rates to see if they could get more customers. I don't propose you lower the rate either, but... Okay. Enough said. Thank you very much.
You were next.
Thank you. I want to offer comments in a couple of areas. One is, just like some of the people sitting around the table, timing does matter. Timing is really, really important. Messaging is important, and continuity is important. Absolutely. Casper was engaged in a timeframe that recognized the golf season and the lead time necessary to promote business for outside play people. We signed them to a contract in November, recognizing that they needed December, January, February to really stimulate the activity for the spring season. So now, in the period of March, is simply not the time to do it, as we can see. Secondly, the messaging is really important. These packagers and outside play people are very much influenced by the messaging that's sent as to whether or not we're going to be around.
That's right.
These outside packagers, they book their rounds at golf, and they get to choose which courses to place their memory. And we've gotten very positive feedback over the last couple of years from the experience they've had, because of the investments we've made in the golf. And I think we're well poised. In fact, the statistics, Bob has, and others, on the bookings supports that. Now, let me replay. Four years ago, I was on the board of directors. And one of the issues that we tackled was the continuing losses of the golf operation. And we tackled it in a strategic way and in a long-term way. We recognized collectively as a board that we weren't very good, as Dick said, about managing a golf course. So we sought to have professional management. We didn't make a couple of phone calls. Phil Rankin, who was then president of the board, asked me to undertake the effort. We put together a committee of five, six people. I think we had 27 meetings in a relatively short period of time, visited. We sent out RFPs. We got responses. We did interviews. We did an exhaustive effort, at the end of which, we had two firms, each one of which we thought would have been a good decision. We recommended to the board of directors that they engage Billy Casper Golf. The two principal reasons we did, we chose them over the other firm finalist, which was Kemper Sports, was number one, the ability to market outside our geographic area by Billy Casper Golf. They had a proven record. They had a database of over 300,000 golfers in their database that were reachable to their database that were reachable to perhaps tap into play here. And the second reason was their partnering concept. Now, a lot of companies can say, yeah, we're going to be your partner, we're going to work closely with you. We actually interviewed clients of theirs, including board members. We interviewed committee members, golf committee members, we interviewed general managers. We went through an exhaustive effort to really undertake an evaluation of their capability. The marketing, I would say, drove the final conclusion to recommend what's the board set. The first three months Billy Casper's in operation of our fiscal year, May, June, and July, their first year, they produced revenue increases over the prior quarter in golf of twenty-three percent. Now, breakdown is followed. Membership play, Ocean Pines, both golf members and Ocean Pines members who are not golfers, which is substantial, no. That revenue quarter to quarter was twelve percent increase. The outside play revenue was up thirty-three percent, May, June, and July that year. August, it all hit the fan with the greens, blew up. Next couple of years is history, we incurred losses. I remember saying at the end of the first quarter, based on those results, they have proven exactly why we hired them. Jim Beisler is part of the committee, by the way, I'm looking over. And we were really thrilled with that. Then, what happened was, what happened? Not their fault. We now are in a situation where we have stepped up the plate, made the investments long-term in the greens project, and continued every other year perhaps, but not every year, the drainage project. But the greens was the most significant, nine hundred thousand dollars, lifetime members of this. We are now poised to capitalize on those investments. We are about to reap the dividends associated with it. Now, the financial performance, we understand it's been horrible, we know the reasons for it. This year, I don't know what, I wasn't here when Bob made his projections for the rest of fiscal year, and we're going to be off budget a little bit, but the loss this year is going to be dramatically less than last year. This board just approved a budget for next year in golf, less than a hundred thousand dollar loss, is that correct? Eighty-some thousand dollars?
Seventy-one.
So we have gone from, say, five hundred thousand to three hundred thousand to two hundred thousand to under one hundred. That's not by accident. That is the consequence of a long-term view of what was needed to make our course playable, to get better management. And now, when we're about to reap the dividends of that, to introduce the doubt that's associated with putting it up for bid or leasing it, it matters. It really does matter. Okay, enough on that side. One last subject, the referendum and so forth. I want to make a couple of comments relating to the email, not email, it's a posting on the forum. Right there. This notion that only two hundred people in Ocean Pines play golf is nonsense. Absolute nonsense. There are somewhere between fifteen hundred, we're trying to get the exact number, but it's north of fifteen hundred people play golf. We can have zero golf members and have a successful operation. The majority of golf revenue comes from non-members. And I said at the budget and financial hearings back in mid-January, the financial model for golf, while membership is a part of that, membership is a part of that and a key part of that. The majority of the revenue comes from non-members in the outside play. That segment Billy Casper has done a really good job with, the bookings for the spring season, and to be followed by the fall season hopefully, unless we somehow mess it up. You all have the ability to mess that up by sending signals that we're going to send out RFPs, calling in questions, because they'll direct that play elsewhere. Anyway, I'll end right there. Two hundred golfers is not the right number. By the way, we all benefit, whether you play golf or not, from the existence, in my opinion, and the real estate people support it, we all benefit from value in our real estate. And that's all.
Bill?
I need as much time as Pete can.
I took less than ten.
Bill, I'm sorry, just because Prince is secretary, could you give the name and address?
Bill Watworth, seven twenty, flight. Just a little bit about my background to kind of give some credibility, is that what I'm going to talk about, okay? For the last eighteen years, I've been a member of the Northern Aviation Commission, and part of that responsibility, we oversee the total operation of BWI Airport and the other state-owned airports. One of the responsibilities I had during the last eighteen years, and still have, is every four to five years, the management contract comes due renewal for the food, beverage, and retail operation. And I, as, I have always been the commissioner, assigned that committee that negotiates. I wasn't the negotiator. I was the commissioner, and Bob gave input, what's going on. Now, in that scenario, management company puts companies and food, beverage, retail operations into operated here, okay? And the management company derives revenue from that. BWI, which in turn goes to the state, gets seventy percent of the revenue that the management company gets. Now, I'm not saying, honestly, we're not in position to get seventy percent of anything. I'm here to speak this afternoon, not with the quality of the management that Billy Casper has done, but with the contract, the financial arrangements we have with Billy Casper absolutely is absolutely horrific. Like, Cassie's after everybody, I'm going to go see a few things here.
Let's go.
Cassie's down. I've got mine. Enough for everybody, there should be one.
With the piss clench?
Yeah. One gallon of milk, Casper's for Poppy. Give it here. Thank you, Jack. A wife's note, thank you. Bear with me, it's like it's three or four pages here, it should be rather quick, bear The arrangement that we have with Casper is an employer-employee type of management. I don't know anywhere where the employee ever loses money. And we're the employer, and Casper is the employee. They have no skin in the game. What happens is, Casper hires their employees, we pay their employees. Casper doesn't pay, we pay. We also pay Casper a management fee. Conclusions: Casper has no skin in the game. As an arrangement, they can't lose money. All financial issues are the responsibility of OPA. Recommendations: We need to explore whomever we negotiated with, contract with, or continue using Casper. We have to implement an outsourcing model, or a business partnership, really, is what I'm saying, that gives OPA a percentage of the gross revenue. Make the management company fiscally responsible for routine maintenance, OPA responsible for major repairs, and that would be defined by some dollar money. Have to negotiate that. Now, next page. Some real figures here, based on our third quarter through the end of January, which completes our third quarter of operation, okay? Gross revenue is over a million dollars. And I just threw in a number. If we got, I'm talking about a percentage, we got three, if OPA, if Casper got three percent of the gross, that's the money that OPA would get. Let's look at the cost here. Management costs, and this is in, you follow along with this, with the first page, you have two pages to find it, first page you find it, okay? What the cost of merchandise, food, and beverage was, and it comes out to a hundred and three thousand plus. Total labor, six twenty-seven, with maintenance, payment to OPA at thirty thousand dollars, total cost. Now, one big issue here is labor. Labor, this labor price here of six hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred dollars, that includes the insurance, metal insurance and all the stuff, Twitted, looking at it, six twenty-seven, represents sixty-two, sixty-one percent of our revenue. Back several years ago, I was the chairman of the Club Advisor Committee, which is food, beverage, operation. And we did a lot of exploration on that. Good business model is payroll should not exceed thirty to thirty-five percent of your revenue, at the very most forty percent. Okay? That's a big issue there. Okay, gross revenue was a million, total cost was ninety-eighty-one, four forty-three, the balance of forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's with us getting the thirty thousand dollars. Now, that's the good news. Now, the bad news is all on the second page of your financial. That's where all the losses are. I have some questions here. There's golf shop, year to date, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. And we're looking over here at expenses of golf on the first, what's that for? There's a general and administrative, year to date, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For what? What's this charge all about? Then they have food and beverage, twelve zero nine five, but food and beverage is also located on the first page. I don't know what that's all about. And I have a question about marketing. We're spending, obviously, we need to market, marketing's great, and we're spending over fifty-five thousand dollars marketing, year to date, okay? Through the third quarter. That averages out to a little over six thousand dollars a month. But for the month of January, we spent almost sixteen thousand dollars in marketing. There are some questions, folks, that need to be answered there. So, that's what I have to say, and I think the important thing is, we need whomever the company is, if we stay with Casp, whatever, we need to have a contract financially that it's a business arrangement, and that they have skin in the game. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate that. My beauty.
Hey, one last thing.
Oh, hey, no last thing.
No, 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 no. I'm still on. One last thing.
No.
One thing we need to do is to increase, obviously, it increases revenue. We need to be cognizant of why people who, there are many, many people here in Ocean Pines who play golf, they don't play here, because they shop their wallet. And that's why you or your husband or whomever, put coupons out of the book, out of the paper. We need to make sure that our pricing to outside play is comparable to what all golf courses are around. You got to get your car, drive to a golf course, I can drive to any golf. And we need to make sure our all-season play or round play is competitive, so we don't lose those stuff. Thank you.
Well, Bob Reeve Snyder, four Howland Court. I said, for the first time, I'm very happy to hear some comments from our board, especially Mr. Clark, who said he hates the seed of golf, was close. However, I just heard a lot of other stuff here that gets me upset. Bill, for example, said, marketing is sixteen thousand dollars in January. Isn't that when you go and market to get your outside play?
Yes, I don't know. I mean, I said I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's just a simple. Number two, I get upset. I came here twenty-some-odd years ago because of amenities. And all of a sudden, somewhere during that twenty years, amenities are supposedly now have to earn a living or make money. I think for the first ten years I was here, the golf course did make money. And the question was, why did people leave? First question was tee times. They left because they, we had too many members, number one, and number two, poor management, there was ways of doubling tee times in the morning, I won't get into all that. That type of thinking got me, I'm a former school teacher. It's like hearing people who say, I don't have kids in school anymore, why do I have to pay school taxes? We live here, these are assets to this community. It attracted me, hopefully it will attract more people when we move out. Seems to be a problem right now, we're not attracting a lot of people. And the last thing, and I could go on for a long time, but I won't, Marvin Steen. I was talking to a guy the other day, he's wondering if Marvin ever gets a hold of this thing, which side of the fifth green is his driveway going to come off facing this? Why is Marvin's full, and I shouldn't say this, but someone brought it up earlier, to shut down the golf course and make it a park would cost as much or more than we're losing right now. People have to, you got to sell that hard. I spoke to many greens people over the years, everything, this keeps coming up, minimum of two hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain the grass cutting, the area, the cart pass, and now you also want to leave the driving range open, keep the driving range open, you got to have maintenance, you got to have people working it, collecting balls, charging, and so on and so forth. I just, I'll sum it up real quickly, I'm really happy with board members, I think everybody here is pro-keep the golf course. My one concern about leasing would be what happens to your membership. Not only are you sending outside stuff, bad vibes, I think, members, we have, by putting out, I think my family pays now four thousand dollars. All right? We're not complaining, but it gives us a couple rights, tee times and so on and so forth. And if you publicly lease this to an outfit that's just going to shut it down and it's their business, then you wind up losing what membership you have. Don't forget that membership puts bucks in the offer in the beginning of the year to spend. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sharon.
Okay, I see Dennis, and then behind, okay.
Ron Ryder.
Ron Ryder.
Ron Ryder.
Eleven Greens Court. I agree with everything that's been said about giving Casper a chance, now that we have a product that's marketed well. We have not had that for the last three years. We maintain a membership that is actually paid full price for half of the product. Very loyal to the association, to our golf course, keep it what it is. If the criteria for closing amenities is that they have to make money, we might as well close all the amenities, except for the parking lot, the beach club, then we can build a campfire, and I'll sit around and sing Kumbaya or something, okay? It's all here for the benefit of the whole community, and that's the way bought into, and that's what I think we should expect in the future.
Ron, I apologize for that, I couldn't see Dennis, okay, sorry. Dennis, you were next.
Dennis Hudson, twenty-six, Lexington. I think it comes down to three, because you're probably going to have a referendum, probably going to field that way. So you need to cost the three different options. Number one is keeping it the way you are, and know what that's going to cost. The other one is leasing it out, and so far, it doesn't sound like there's anybody going to take losing operation, pay, bust yourself for that. And the third one is to close it, but maintain it as some kind of garden or whatever. So you need to figure those costs to keep them, and once you present that to the public as a citizen, it might be a different opinion altogether. Let's be prepared for that for the referendum, and I think that and the argument, because the cost of maintaining gardens or walking paths is going to shock every, budget and finance, we've already looked at that, it's a huge number, and it's not going to be for...
No revenue.
And no revenue.
Just one question, Jim Beisler, one eighty-six, Ocean Park. In the event there is a referendum, is it a majority deal, win, lose?
Yeah. If there's ten votes returned, six yes, four no, yes?
I'm not sure that's accurate. Is it Jeff?
Is it by section or the entire community?
Our community.
Before we get misinformation out there answering that question, we're going to go get the answer.
While I pull it out.
We will get the answer.
I know the answer.
Jim, that's a good question, we'll, we will for sure follow through. And Marty, you had a comment?
Just a couple of follow-ups coming.
I got more public.
We will.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're hanging outside.
No, there's others too. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir.
Rob Landis, two thirty-seven, Windjammer. I purchased my property about fifteen years ago, moved here about twelve years ago, and I am a golfer, I used to be a member. However, my reasoning for not continuing is that, like when I go skiing, I like a variety of places, I don't like to be just one place. However, I am very much in favor of keeping the course, because I live on the course, number one, and I enjoy playing it, and I, when I have people, friends down, even not being a member, I like to have my friends, you know, enjoy the course. I have had a couple of ideas that I have talked to a couple of different people about, trying to get people... to get people more interested in the course, even if they're not a golfer. And there's pros and cons, but one thing was, is that first thing in the morning, and last at night, let's say from seven to nine o'clock or whatever in the morning, you have a, maybe organized or unorganized, but if you had your recreation department, have a walking, jogging, biking club. And this you could do with the nine holes that are not being, like if they go off the front nine, you use the back nine, and vice versa, same thing at the end of the day. My thought here is that you would have people, other than golfers, that have an opportunity to see our course and be able to use it. And I know it's a golf course, but we're trying to promote the usage of it, get people feeling more like it's part of their community. I think the amenities, as was mentioned, this is one of the main reasons that I moved here, because of what is available, even though I use some of them and not others, but I want, I wouldn't ever, because I don't use the swimming pools, because I go to the beach all the time, I wouldn't wanna close the pool. You know, just because I don't use it doesn't mean that it shouldn't be available for everybody else. Another thought, as far as trying to get people to come and play to see our course, here's a couple things. First of all, you could put something out in the paper or whatever, that residents of Ocean Pines, if they go to the golf course and prove that they're a member by their card or whatever, they get two free rounds of golf. It doesn't cost us anything. They're allowed to have two free rounds of golf to get them to come. It's not just something that anybody can do, it's the community members. And also, that if you, if that isn't an idea, then possibly, that people, if they pay to play golf, they can, they can use, if they save their receipt, they can use two of those, or whatever number you might say, but two of those you could use toward your golf membership. If you decide to join the club, I played twice, I paid sixty dollars twice, so there's a hundred and twenty dollars that could be credited toward my membership. Trying to promote people in playing, trying to get people to come back. Most of the guys that I play golf with go other places because of various reasons, which I'm not gonna get into, but we all, when we talk, would like to be more associated with Ocean Pines, whether they be a member or just play here more regularly with our groups that we play. And I, basically, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joe?
You gotta think about running for board. Seriously, I'm serious. I'd like to say something about Marvin.
Who is this guy?
I thought I did.
You said you liked this guy.
Pardon me.
Who is this guy?
Yeah, who is this guy? Yeah, well, see, maybe that's, maybe that's the attitude of the golfer. I live in eighty-four, corner town.
Thank you.
Ocean Pines Barrow, two one eight one one. Joe at outdoors.net, four one oh, two oh eight, oh one one four.
Give him hell, Joe.
Your time's up.
Time's up.
Yeah. I've heard some people, not here, I'm not talking about here, but I've heard some people say some nasty things about Marvin Steen since his issues come up. Like, one person said something to the effect that, he's talking about people like Steen who may want to do what he's talking about doing, have no interest in the community. I'll tell you a little short, short story about Marvin Steen. Back in two thousand and five, when the veteran war was built, I came up with the idea, Sharon was one of the major people involved, Aaron Rhodes, Andrew, two of you did it. I came up with the idea that a big bronze medallion around the base of the United States flag would really look good. And Sharon said to me, it's a wonderful idea, go get the money. So, I went and checked, and then it was expensive. So, I gotta have a list of people that thought might contribute. Does it happen, and I thought I'd have a hard time raising the money, the sizable amount. Does it happen, the first person I called was Marvin Steen. I got calling him, I got halfway through the sales pitch, and Marvin says, hold on a minute, how much does it cost? I said, it might be about seven thousand dollars. Second didn't go by, he said, get whatever you need and send me the bill. So Marvin Steen, and people who may have ideas that are different than some people in this room or in the community, doesn't make them bad people, they just have different Couple things, Bob, you mentioned about if the possibility of having given back people their lifetime membership money. I'm not sure what the final draft was, or what was finally approved, but I recall Mr. Gumstack standing over the community hall, saying that this was no guarantee, and you could lose that money, is that correct, Pete?
Right.
So that, your comment about how people would lose their money, is inflammatory, and it's not true.
Well, actually, if you're gonna look at me and say that, Joe, it's the right thing to do, so that's why I said.
Well, why did we?
We, there's no legal obligation, but the question is, what's the right thing to do?
Well, why didn't you put the right thing to do in the contract to start with?
Don't have to worry about that.
Right. I hear, I've heard the words, we're now poised. We've been poised so many years, I'm, you know, if it was posed, you'd be...
I could hold it up, don't worry about it, I'll hold it up.
No, we're poised. Well, we were poised last year, and some, maybe not as much, but words, wonderful opportunities, they keep coming up. However, let me say this, I believe that a lease or any kind of change at this point in time is premature. I agree with you on that, Tom, and I agree with others who've said that. We have invested a lot, a ton of money. I believe that this October or so, we'll know whether we were poised or not. And we shouldn't be doing anything of any dramatic consequence until at least this fall, or even thinking about it, you bet. Casper came on here, as people verified, they said the money that would be made here was not in golf. They wanted to run all golf, all food and beverage operations, the yacht club, beach club, golf course, Hearns Grill. Bob Thompson, before that could happen, came to the board of directors, again, and convinced the board that he should be allowed to continue to run and manage the yacht club. And Joe Reinhardt was there with all his supporters, riled, riled, the board said, okay, you can keep, continue running. So we can't blame Casper too much in that, but the poise do. Got off track, let me get back. We've been spending, we've been spending money, we've been spending money handing over fish on a golf course, and I'm not saying it's not money well-spent or didn't need to be spent, but back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, the board directors, in their infinite wisdom, find them up there, decided to proceed with a golf drainage project that they estimated total at the time, it cost five million dollars. How many people in this room are aware that that estimated cost of five million dollars back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and the process of doing the golf drainage project, that we've only done nine holes as of two thousand and fourteen? Nine holes. Here's what bothers me about the poise. We're poised, but if you look at the general manager's schedule of capital expenditures, the following year after our great poised year, we're looking at tearing up the golf course again to start golf drainage, and then skip a year back. So we have not solved the problem of tearing up the course and try people ready. We're only half-done. So we're poised for one year, what happens a year after that? Do we, we unpoised? I don't know, it just seems to me that there's a, a lot of stuff going on that is, involves bad management. Board of directors of two thousand and five, two thousand and six, whoever made that decision to do golf drainage over a long period of time, cost this community a ton of money. It could have been, this golf course should have been closed down for a year. The entire thing done, if that's what's needed, and then reopened. As it is, they are to blame, the situation we're in today, in many respects, and they didn't do it all, and they discussed all of that, why didn't they? And, I don't know if everybody in this room knows or not, the reason they didn't do it all one time is because, if they did it at one time, they'd have to go to referendum, so much more, and they were afraid to go to referendum. Don't be afraid to go to referendum, anything like that, trust the people in this community. They may not always agree, but they're the ones that own this place, so trust in their judgment, whatever. Thank you.
Just to clarify one thing, Joe, just, we actually have nineteen holes, not eighteen, so we have to, because they hold down, and we still have eighteen holes to fill. As part of the discussion, we have leased each one of them, so it's a free day. So we do not need to reason for shutting down for the greens. Closing down nine holes at a time kinda puts your product out of business. So whoever came up with the idea of doing nineteen holes was actually good. So we have a chance to keep an eighteen.
It was the same group that decided to do the golf drainage. So they blew one answer, and they got the other one right.
I, I see David, I, my back. Okay. Dave, I'm sorry, I saw you, but I didn't see if this people had...
Uh, Dave Stevens, one twenty, fifth century park. It's the same, Stan, so.
What did he say?
He didn't clearly say anything.
Uh, well, a couple things. First thing, my golf credentials, aside from my game, I, I think I can safely say that I'm, have the longest continuous membership in the Ocean Pines golf course, than anybody in this room. For sure, for sure. Picking up on what Joe said about Marvin Steen, full disclosure, Marvin helped me in the past, and I've sat down and I've thought, there's no doubt in my mind that he looks at the best interest of Ocean Pines. And whether or not you seriously, or you can at this point in time get a lease arrangement or not, you should take what he says very seriously, because if he's writing that kind of a letter, then you should pay attention to it, and you should do your best to do. Nothing I've heard here has convinced that that's been done. Two people, I talked to four places, what they said to them, what you said, I don't know. It didn't sound like we made the golf course, or there was any effort, in our, trying to be honest, that we made it sound very attractive to some people, but I don't know, I wasn't there. Going back to Marvin, if you look at his, which I've done about three times, I've read it, I've also read all the emails coming from all of my fellow golfers concerning it. Lot of confusion about the referendum, lot of confusion, the possibility of... Now Marvin, if you look at what he said, he offered several alternatives for the board to consider, and there wasn't, close the golf course or else, far from it. He also did provide at the end, a sample of a referendum issue. But my point is, is that in a referendum, the single hardest thing to do is to get the question. What is the question? And I submit to you that even having read Marvin Steen's letter, having talked back and forth, there isn't a person in this room who knows what the question will be in that referendum. So you can talk as much as you want, but you're not talking about something that you have any knowledge of. The range of possible questions can go from the really draconian question that Marvin asked, or put at the end, which is close the golf course by January first, to a whole range of other things that we could do in between. So you don't know. I think that, my personal opinion, I think it's difficult to lease the course, to come to a reasonable lease arrangement, but I also don't believe that timing is the real issue. It will always be the issue, always be the issue. We don't have to publish it in the newspapers, but we surely can pursue these lease arrangements more than we've done already. And first of all, write out what we think would be a reasonable arrangement, and how we might get it, it might not be next year, it might get the year end. Now if you do, if you do, continue as we are with Casper, which I pretty well believe is the only choice you've got, really, unless somebody comes up with a marvelous lease arrangement and we can build up, but that hasn't happened. There is no second choice, I think, Casper, and I think, on the whole, Casper's done a good job, but it's not helping, it's not helping at all by saying, this course is in the best condition it's ever been. That's plain bull, it's not best edition. We've done a greens improvement program, which has made the greens as good as they were before the greens improved, except that they're likely to last this a whole lot longer. In other words, they're not gonna be as fragile as they were before, we've got good greens, good undertakings to those greens, that's good. But on the other hand, if you're out there playing golf, you're an average golfer who's played other courses, you're not gonna be blown away. Now the thing you're definitely not gonna be blown away is the drainage, that's the other thing. If you're going to say the truth, say what's already been said, what Joe said, is that that drainage program must compare. Now the way it did go, and I was on the board for six years while we were, I guess, in my hand each year, and pushing, was a good way to do it. I mean, we had not a whole lot of negative feedback from the outside play that came in, at least that came to our attention, and we can continue doing it, but it's gonna cost more money, and we have to figure out how to pay for it. So I really think that you've got to take this thing seriously, and you've got to look at all of this, not just, not just, oh, well, everything's great and fine, and, you know, we're gonna get all this outside play and it's gonna, maybe, maybe, but, I would, so that's all.
Yeah, one very short thing. Dave mentioned, and I agree with it, really important is the language on the, any referendum that might come to pass, and hopefully it will not come to pass, but a really, really important thing is proper information to those making the decision and voting. And in this particular instance, there's been a lot of misinformation, and it's gonna take some effort to get the proper information out to the people, some of it's already been mentioned. How many people really use our golf course, not two hundred? How much will it really cost if you shut it down and have no revenue? Those kinds of things. Armed with the right information, the people can make their judgment, but in the absence of the right information, or worse, with misinformation, they may make a totally different judgment. So that's really incumbent upon the board to develop the proper information to allow, if it comes to referendum, and hopefully...
Thank you very much. I really need to move on the agenda.
Well, wait, before you do, I've been having my hand up to make... That is it, I, I do, so things, especially with Pete mentioning misinformation. Earlier, Pete and I'll never agree on a number, but Pete talked about our increased green fees. Does everybody at this table have a copy of the budget? Do somewhere, this year, thirteen, lowest in the last five years. We talk about, and then Pete refers to budgets, well, last year's budget was a hundred, this year's budget's gonna be lower, thirteen, we missed budget by two hundred percent. That's not even close. This year, we're gonna miss budget by over sixty percent. We can't quote budgets, let's look at the facts. The facts are, membership's declining, revenues are declining, here we, gotta do something. One other comment, to people that have been here a long time, when I moved here, my favorite amenity was the Equestrian Center. Don't think it can happen, let's go horseback, ride the saddle. We need to protect this golf course.
Go ahead.
Was it twenty-five?
Yeah, okay. It was, it was...
Excuse us, please.
Excuse me?
Excuse us, thank you.
I agree totally with the fact that they said that, one of the things we should do is measure if you go to referendum, if it's forced to refer, might as well say, if it's forced to referendum, it's gonna be very important that you all have an honest assessment of what it costs to run that course every year as a loss, versus how much would it cost, what's the net cost of running it, not at all. And I have no idea what those figures are gonna be, you might find out it's a half a million if you close it, and three hundred. The other thing I think is very important, and I... The other thing I think is very important, and I think Marty's looking to, is the fact that I'm not sure there's a board here, when you agree that, hey, it's the best year, come on, hundred thousand dollar losses, what we budget, then it comes into three hundred thousand. That doesn't cut it. So somewhere, if you're going to draw a line in the sand, it's funny, if you draw a line in the sand and then there's somebody like Marty, you get an agreement that says, if we don't make this mark, that we believe that we can make this year, then we'll agree to push this forward. It's not really kicking the can down the road, it's saying, this is the line, if we don't do this, we don't at least break even. I don't mean from, I talk as an association, we need to at least break even with the running the course or not running it. It's going to cost us half a million not to run it, then half a million loss ought to be okay. Or two million, whatever. So I, that's it.
Thank you. I, and we just need to move on. So thank you all of you for here for the golf. I appreciate you being here and we certainly will do our best to hear you and this, I'm sure we'll continue. Okay, county for discussion, Marty.
You know, every year at the organization, the new guys, even the old guys, more people than the new guys. My first year, we're four of us. Now, you haven't gone through it yet. You just went through, you just went through a year ago. I mean, it's, you really don't quite know what's going on. You've been a board member for about an hour, you're asked to, yeah, county for, which is one of the very few duties spelled out in our documents that the board of directors is supposed to do. I mean, it's, our responsibilities is outlined in our financial management policies twice, and in our bylaws, five words being again at eight oh eight. We have no information to any due diligence, and there's no choice. I'm going to put forward the motion that says, let's at least look at some choices. I'm not saying get rid of people who've had eighteen years that are at, put on time.
Just to clarify, are you saying to move to a different date if we vote on this?
No.
Or just have choices prior?
R and P, we can look at. Why aren't you back?
I just wanted to clarify what you were saying, okay?
I mean, there ought to be some information. I mean, if we're drawing straws, for God's sakes.
I just need clarification.
That's it.
Anybody else around too? Anybody in the audience? Question about the R and P for county for. Okay, Marty, you're on the floor today. Resin goose problem discussion, you go, boy. This is yours again.
Well, I actually plan something, I'm like bored, but we have so many people in the room. You know, we got a, we're pretty lucky to have this environmental asset group that we have, and they've come under attack. Mainly because they, there's a small group of activists, they're being, they're misleading people, starting with Charlene Sharp, wasn't she in the room here? She wrote a story, now, here's the front page of Daily Pines, has everybody seen it? The picture of that goose is a domestic barnyard duck. There's thirteen or sixteen of them in the whole place. And they have, call the goose, call the duck, it's a barnyard honker.
Just the squall is fine.
Well, you know what? I'm a pretty well-known conservationist in this county, and they don't worry about these. They don't slow down at stoplights for them. These are barnyard ducks, we don't care.
We see it on this.
These have never once been the topic of any discussion, ever.
Domestic goose.
You call it whatever you want to call it. They haven't been the topic of any conversation.
Correct.
Of the environmental and environmental assets.
We do this.
Ever. Okay?
Again, misinformation.
Misinformation. The real discussion has been about the corrupted migratory goose problem suffering. These, these birds are making home here because people continue to feed them. And it's got to stop. And these guys that are doing duty, that we've charged them, I mean, we've asked them to research this. You know how long this has been on annual report, the Environmental and Natural Assets Committee?
No.
Since two thousand eleven. They asked for money this year to kill the resident geese. I don't think it made the budget. But the fact is, we're not talking about geese. We're talking about resident geese that are.
Canadians.
That are corrupted migratory birds. It isn't good for the migratory bird population, it isn't good for us, and I think we need to support our environmental and environmental natural asset, not bear our, this is ridiculous. And I, I mean, that's probably why Charlene's on. They, there should be a letter of attraction in the paper. I mean, it's right under, here it is, here's a picture of this thing. The Ocean Pines Environmental and Natural Assets Committee has recommended Ocean Pines Association eliminate the geese that live around the pond. They might as well put a picture of a truck. Because we know we're talking about eliminating trucks, and anybody's talked about that. So I have a map.
Marty, I've done some research on that, can I jump in here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I, you know, yeah, I, I think it's a serious issue because it upset a lot of people. And it caused a lot of consternation back and forth, and some emails that were sent out that probably shouldn't have been sent out to the people of this board who volunteered to spend their time and effort in trying to represent the best interest of the community. So I did some research with DNR. Here's the deal, here's the way it works. DNR is not the decision maker. DNR is, they issue licenses and things of that nature for hunting and fishing and things of that nature. But in partnership and in overall management agreement contracts that they have with USDA, they have taken the responsibility of looking at this resident goose situation. And in partnership with USDA and US Fishing and Wildlife Services administer this particular program. If we allocated twenty thousand dollars to the, to the removal of the geese in this community, we could not do it until we get official sanction from the US Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, period. We do not have the authority to do that. They are a protected international species, they cross border lines, boundary lines. So therefore, we don't have the authority to do anything. But, but, there are programs that are put in place, and I have talked to an individual USDA, who is willing to help us in recognizing what the options are at the committee level or at a, at a board level or what have you. And they'd be willing to work with designated individuals to help us rectify the situation. Now, it's a three-step process.
Just one quick, do you know that the, that the committee's already done everything you're saying in this, posted online?
It's a three, it's a three-step, three-step process.
It's all right here. It's all in the report. It's all in the report that we handed out at the last meeting.
All right, well, then who is the person in charge of the goose program?
It's, when I.
Who is the person in charge of the goose program?
Wait a minute, let me just interject. When, my first year on board, I was the liaison to the committee. And that's when this report was completed, it was given to Bob and to the board, and nobody was ready to do, take any action at all at that point. The people that are, that serve on this committee are people from coastal base, people that, uh, help me, somebody.
They don't have any authority.
No, 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 but they know, they know how to get the eagle. They've already, they've already met with these people, they've already done all this. So the committee itself actually, under, actually, when, when it started was under Dave Blazer.
That's correct.
Has already done, I mean, your research, I'm sure is, would be a nice addition to though, they've missed something, but I can't imagine they have.
Well, the individual, the individual that I talked to, basically indicated to me that that they think they heard from somebody who worked in a doctor's office. Was that you? Did you call them? Did you call USDA? Okay, so they've not heard, they're familiar with Ocean Pines, the guy is familiar with Ocean Pines, but he's saying that he hadn't worked with anybody there.
Yeah, but they're, there's, there's, they've cited all their people that they, their contacts.
Let me see, let me see the.
I just gave, look.
No, let me see the list, let me see the list, it's gone.
I don't get contacted, I'm a liaison.
I mean, it's not just one person.
But when Bob Abley tells me he's on top of it, I give him.
Yeah, they've been working on this.
But like everything in Ocean Pines, I'm sure we get another fifteen or sixteen opinions.
It might be worth it to give that person's name to the committee.
Be glad to do it. Be glad to do it.
Yes, Bob, Bob Abley is the, who actually, actually, would you take that information from him?
No, I'll talk to Bob, I'll talk to you and Bob directly. I'll talk to him directly, because I asked him about Bob Abley, he said, no, I don't know Bobby.
Well, Bob just took over the committee because Dave, uh, his time, his, his office, his office turned off. So they were without somebody for a while, and Bob stepped in. So he was.
Bob List, is it Tom List?
Yeah, but the group's been working on it really for a good three years, three or four years. So maybe if they could hook up with first use.
That's, that's what this guy's saying, has to happen or should happen.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I think they know that when they first came out with it.
They can't do anything direct.
Okay, Tom, Tom has to come in.
My, the process, whatever the process is, and I'm glad to help, but I want to speak to you, it's, you know, it's not only, just to give you the sense of what's going on here. There's not been a motion put in front of our board, there's been no plan presented, there's been no budget present, there's nothing in the budget at this point to do anything. I came back and took a week's vacation, came back to my home, answering machine was completely out of space. I had calls from people, I won't tell you what.
Is that on top of the ones I left?
No, on top of. He left me the ones on golf. You know, I don't mind getting phone calls, when somebody sends an email, threaten euthanize my board, I got news for you, I get ticked up. Now that's enough. I don't care who sent it, I don't care who sent it, I don't care how they sent it, it is absolutely unacceptable for a member of our community and a member of our organization to be sending that kind of email. If you want to send an email that provides a possible solution, do you know how many possible solutions we've received in emails or phone calls? One.
Two.
Two. Two? Two now? Two, excuse me.
By the way, they're all.
I'm on vacation.
Maybe they got them off our website.
Maybe they got them off of there. I'm sorry, I got to finish, I got to finish what I want to say, because I think it's important. When there's solutions brought forward and there's reaction, a committee's been working on something for two years, they're dedicated to the environment, they do it for a living, for heaven's sakes, and they present in a report in December, in the end, a comment of the various options that are there. Board of Directors did not run off and start killing geese. Matter of fact, Bob went off looking for solutions that didn't require us to euthanize the bird, which is what you presented at the last board. So that's what this board is doing. We are looking for solutions to the problem that has been presented to us by an advisory committee, who has spent over two years putting it together and presenting it. And I don't mind getting phone calls, I don't mind getting guidance, I take it all the time, from these guys around this table and around here. But I don't want anybody on this board of directors to get threatening emails over the goose. Now, I'm sorry, that's just over the line, folks. It's just not acceptable. And if you've got a solution, by all means, bring it forward, we'll look at it. I don't know that this is going to be on the agenda for the next meeting, I don't think it is, because we're still looking at what might be done. But Marty, if I, we don't always agree, but when it comes to that newspaper article, virtually every single person who called, got the information wrong from that article. Every single one of them.
One comment, when they clutter up their phone answering machine, they try.
Exactly. There's a message to his madness.
I'm, I'm, I don't mean to, but I do.
You got to go to church.
I got to go to church. So again, I'm not leaving because I don't want everyone to have to say, but I'm in the choir and I've got to go take care of that responsibility as well. So I'll leave you all to.
My bill.
Call me tree hugger, call me bird lover, call me whatever you want, but I don't think I will ever to have geese killed unless all other options have been exhausted. And I still may not be able to do that vote, so I may be at the sending vote. But saying that, Mr. Abley and his committee of environmentalists who are, he is an award-winning environmentalist.
I swear.
Exactly. He's given, they researched, they just didn't come out and say, we got too many geese, let's go kill them. These guys have researched this and researched this, and they are respected, they have my respect. I may disagree with, with the end result on that, but they're not saying that's the end result. They're saying it's a problem, it's, you know, unhealthy to people, let's find other, other solutions. But the judge, you know, the thing that was just put out there that, that the board is going to go kill all these geese is wrong, and it's typical Ocean Pines.
Well, where did that come from?
Nobody has anybody in this room other than Terry.
What, what authorization was, was a newspaper using to, to put a picture of a barnyard goose on its front page and talk about?
It's pre-pressed, they do what they do.
I've talked.
So, so he misquoted you?
No, I'm not.
It happens to be the first amendment to the United States Constitution.
Okay, 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 wait a minute, we're going to close the seat down if you don't have respect for each other. It's one person speaking at a time, please.
I had the opportunity to act with that. She, I believe, was, was, I believe this, she told me, was misled by some people. She believed this is what we're, I didn't remember. Jack, everybody grew up on Eastern Shore. Not everybody hunts Canadian geese and eats them. You can tell a lot of people that that is a Rolls Royce, or, you can tell people that's a canvas bat duck, and some in this room would go, oh, they're very.
Uh, Terry's got to go too, so.
So to, um.
Oh, you got to church, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not an obligation.
They're going to hell.
Terry.
How was there last night?
It's, it's, it's not an obligation. You're all right.
My husband's right.
Why?
I'm going to bring Riley.
He'll work without you.
Anyway, anyway, you know what? This is, this is craziness, and I really feel for this environmental committee to spend such an enormous amount of time really trying to take care of our environment. But I will say there is an upside to this. The one thing the environmental committee has tried to do for a long time is educate people to not feed the geese. A lot of our emails that we've gotten have said, people did not realize that they should not be feeding geese, even though there are signs all over that say, do not feed the geese. Really, we created part of this problem by feeding these geese, so they don't have to migrate to go find whatever they need, they stay right here, we'll all just throw brat at them, which is the first thing you can give them.
That's right.
Um, so the upside of this whole thing is that there has been some positive education. I'm really glad about that. So maybe if we can stop feeding the geese, thinking we're doing such a great thing, eventually the population will then, some other things, you know, clean up and all this other stuff, and, and maybe we can, can think of putting these all.
Anybody else in the floor? Okay, this is now your opportunity. Anna about the geese?
I think that maybe we should put more signs, so that people say it'll be fine or something.
Anna, I'm sorry, for the record, is your address?
I'm sorry, Anna Folds. And I like to speak when we have it too, when I, when this is over, about the country court.
Anna, we'll talk about that at the meeting, we've already been through that three times. We're not covered it. Anna, just, Anna, what's your address? What's your address? Okay, thank you.
Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, you're on at seven.
I have to do, I have to talk. I have to do, I have to talk.
Talk about the geese, your comment with the geese is for science.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I appreciate it. Dick.
Dick Neiman again, but I'm gonna give you some information that Walt Bogie, who happens to be one of the Ocean Pines Anglers has in mind. But Ocean, Ocean Pines Anglers Club, we don't chase golf balls, we chase fish.
I got you, I got you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't kill any of those.
No, we don't, it's catch and eat. Except the ones you want to eat. Internet Center for Wildlife Damage Management, I have no idea what it is. Okay, Walt gave me this, and I think it might be who the press perhaps, or, or Ocean Pines. Some of this information in there, I don't know what this is, I have no idea, so I'll, I'll tell you that. Walt gave me this. First part says Canadian geese are a modest success story for wildlife management. At one time, number of Canadian geese were serious decline. However, this has been a real success. They estimate the geese at five point five hundred six. Unfortunately, this dramatic increase in population has resulted in negative consequences. Now, I refer to this as the Walt Bogie Goose Poop Index. Supposedly, this thing says a goose, we always thought it was a pound a day, says it could poop every twenty minutes, pound and a half.
Pound and a half a day.
Pound and a half a day. If you look at that, I, I figure each bird's about a quarter pound, a quarter ton of goose poop.
That's right.
Now, Walt doesn't know how many geese, he estimated three hundred, he says that's about eight, eight hundred, eighty tons. I'm going to just run through this real quick, but I'll supply this to anybody, maybe Teresa will give this out to you guys. He brought out the chemicals, it has nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, chemical oxides. That's the same thing we're trying to get out from the farmers, you know, from the chicken poop, okay? So, and from the, people put fertilizer on the yard. So it's all the same issue. Pathogens, uh, is a lot, it says there's a wide variety of pathogens capable of infecting humans, out of the fish. Uh, and he's read about those, and some of them say they may not be too bad.
Pass them out if anybody wants to, I did the same.
Did you?
Yeah.
So this is Ohio Geese Control. Now, Walter brings up the one land use. He says, "This is the one I know that strikes at me and a lot of the board members and the Ocean Pines Anglers Club. We run the kids' fishing contest every year. And really, if we could use goose poop as bait, we'd really be better off."
Yeah.
Because, uh, we're always walking through it. Now, I know there's things that Bob told me, Bob Abley told me, they have a machine that picks up goose poop. I don't know how it gets it out of the water, that's what I'm saying. So, uh, and then he says, he, he says, "I live near Saint Martins River," he means Martins. "I love to see the variety of wildlife, particularly birds that abound, but I do not enjoy the hundreds of aggressive Canadian geese disfiguring our land and disrupting traffic. I'm also distressed to see our residents good-heartedly feed the birds, not realizing they're actually hurting the bottom line. These striking birds have overpowered our environment and the population these days." And I for one, that's all for Walt. I for one have come down, uh, Cattle Road by the other golf course that they gave the portway. I came around that corner at forty mile an hour, and I wasn't able to hit one of those things. Not that I wanted to, but they, I couldn't stop. They, believe it or not, they can fly.
Yeah.
You know, it seems to think that around here. I think assigned it on the traffic, if you don't want to euthanize them and provide food for them.
Speed up. Well, you know what you're saying, they.
All cities, I don't stop geese. I'm mad, and I'm probably going to run out of Ocean Pines. I just roll through them. They just go away. I've actually watched the geese sitting in front of Rite Aid, sit there and put out what I call road guards in the army. We used to put them out, they looked like this, and the others ran across the street. So I know they can run, I know they can fly, except some of these orphaned things we have out there.
Can you make sure that Walt knows that that report is online? Because a lot of what he's citing, yeah, it's online, it's there.
On the Ocean Pines?
It's on the Ocean Pines website.
I will.
It's a, it's a very, um.
Well, Walt tells us about this about every other meeting on the board meeting, so he felt compelled to give me.
Yeah, and that's fine, but he might, he might really want to look at that.
I do think, I do think.
Five hundred thousand geese, all we have to do is go to O'Malley, pick bird.
Actually. Chick.
But the other thing is, it might be smart to post signs that says, uh, instead of blocking traffic. I think it's dangerous on five eighty-nine when a sucker's coming across. And you put a sign that says, uh, "Slow down and move slowly through the geese, don't stop traffic," or something like that. I mean, you don't have to stop. And I think that's one complaint also, other than pooping all over the world, I mean, you don't have to stop, they don't have to disrupt traffic.
Dick, you remember the fish kill a couple of years ago?
Yes.
And that was, and they attributed it to the.
People often ask us, "Will we eat the fish that come out of the South Pond?" I says, "I would not." Uh, it might be what the Japanese raised tilapia, or Chinese raised tilapia, but it's not what I want to eat past. Well, there goes Walt. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right.
I'm the same person I was before, if you want to quote reporter feedback.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay. You kind of hit the nail on the head. I would like to point out one thing, that is a technicality, but often seen as urgent. I went, I went back and looked at the minutes of every meeting of this committee. And I looked at the video when they made their present presentation. This committee's never been voted to make any recommendation to the Board of Directors at all. None, none. So before you do anything, I wouldn't do a thing. I'd go say, "Look, you want to make a recommendation, make a recommendation." Bob Abley came to the meeting, and as close as he got was, "Well, if there's too many, you got to get rid of them." That's not a recommendation from a committee to this Board of Directors. So I would, I would say that, but you're right, we, we can't do this unilaterally on our own. The, in order to, before you kill geese, this is only this type, not migrant geese, or these resident Canadian geese. Some would argue they have a different, but before you even get to that point, you have to exhaust all other means controlled. And then, you got to call in the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and they do a survey. And after they do the survey, then you can apply for a permit. After you get the permit, you can go out and hire somebody to do whatever it needs to be. But there aren't too many birds out there, wildlife, all wildlife, absence humans is a bad, absence humans is a weird problem. But we're not going to go, we're not going to call the human.
Can we vote on that?
Why don't you go?
Need a permit for that?
Matt, listen, I'll buy you an airline ticket to northern Canada, and you can hang around with the geese.
Joe, continue, because Jack is being disruptive. Please continue, he's being disruptive.
Well, I would, I would say something about Jack's disruptive, however, I've been disrupted in the past, I suppose. But I'm calling the federal black. Very. Uh, what Tom said was kind of disturbing. In my former life, I worked for Field and Street Magazine, but I, I run into a lot of, hold on, animal rights hackers. Some of them are extreme to the extremes, and hurting humans is not, I, I would not take threats against this board lightly. I don't know who they are, but I wouldn't take these threats lightly. All you got to do is go look at the newspapers over time, and some of the stuff that's going on. I, I wouldn't take this.
So there's a, there's a letter to the editor in today's Independent, where the person referred the geese to, which I can understand.
Well, in your case, maybe.
Yeah, of course.
Anyway, maybe I lose track of what I was going to say, I think I am about finished, but, oh. I've, I've already been up there and watched a, and I've seen this happen twice, same person, maybe something like that. Car stops on five eighty-nine. Two people get out of the car, go into the back of the car, get pushles, turn it down on the five eighty-nine. Now, with that kind of thing, those people, never. The problem is that just too many of them for that environment. And it not only hurts, it's actually on humans. It's polluting the pond, harming the fish. Uh, do you have a little toddler up there? I've seen people up there with little toddlers feeding the geese, and the toddlers are down in the, in the goose poop with their hands.
And barefoot.
Yeah. It just, it, I just urge you to approach it in a reasonable way. One final thing, I almost forgot, this is, we have in the last five, ten, whatever, we kind of manicured our pond area.
Excuse me, ladies, excuse me, ladies, let Joe sub.
We've kind of manicured our properties around. We have trimmed grass right down to the edge, cut down a lot of trees that were growing next, right on the edges of pond as a means to improve the view for those walking around or seeing the infections. This is horrendous management, that looks terrible. The first thing you're going to do, if you look and see what you do about the geese, is you should let the growth grow up around the edges for a number. But, uh, and, and I think, you know, maybe it probably works for somebody who gets in touch with the state. All those recommendations are in that list of stuff, but I would recommend you go, that's just a copy, and I'm not sure they include the whole thing of what's on the DNR website. You go to the DNR website, put the link for that information, it's all right there, who to contact, everything else.
Sixteen pages.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am.
Donna Cook, sixty Ken and Dry.
Don, I'm sorry, Donna, I didn't hear you. Good, thank you.
Um, basically, I'm confused, and I guess it's probably because of the articles that was in the paper. But the one group that crosses five eighty-nine all the time have two big white geese, one with the bad.
They're domestic.
Right, and they made it sound in that article like those were the ones that were going to euthanize them. They barely go in the water, so they're not even polluting the water. Um, there aren't, from what I have seen, all that many resident Canadian geese there. You know, there'll be some, one afternoon, you know, hundreds of them on the middle pond, and then the next day, there won't be any. Um, I have seen that one group of resident geese, and they're domestic. I've seen a number of resident ducks, but I don't see a whole lot of resident Canada geese, except the one who has the deformity. He can't fly because his.
Angel wing.
It's angel wing.
It can't fly.
Well, the one with the backwards foot, is what I'm talking about, not.
The backwards foot?
Yeah, his, his, he was born that way. But, um, so, but they were talking about the traffic tie-up. The traffic tie-up is that one group, so they're not in danger, right? They're, that's not what's in play.
Well, they're in danger.
But I'm in, in danger of being euthanized, so, okay? Because I really don't see a lot of resident Canada geese. And then there is also, speaking of mentioning the signs report, there is discrepancy in the signs that are there. One sign says, "Do not feed the geese," and then another sign says, "Corn's okay, or grain's okay." So there needs to be a consensus of what is allowed and what is not allowed in the way of feeding. Because, I mean, it's been a while since I've seen that, but there are two different signs. One said, "Don't feed them," the other said, "Grain's okay."
At the South Pond?
At the South. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm one of the troublemakers.
Name, name, name.
Yeah, Mike Abellman, Seven Hudson Place in Park. The reason I raised the alarm on the domestic geese, well, there were thirteen south, and only twelve, one of them detected. Uh, there's three left with Northgate that are, I've been to all that, it would be, thank you, time. But the reason I raised the flag on the domestic, is you go through the report that Bob Abley, and look at it, and I, I checked out several other states, and they almost pair each other, right?
They do, yeah, they do.
Yeah, goose problem. Uh, there's, they all have one little paragraph in there that says, "Get rid of domestic geese at the Decoy," right? And that's a nice assertion, but there's no science. You know, unless they figured out a way to interview the geese and say, you know, "Did you come here because of domestic geese?" I really have a hard time figuring out how they do that, but at any rate, uh, I offered the suggestion about moving the three Northgate down, see if it, those of them that think there's a great problem there. Uh, I had a, I had a nice idea about the poop machine, and I set one recent, there is a remote-controlled drone, like, it's like a hawk. And you can fly around the ponds a couple of times. They perhaps scare the hell out of, oh, scare the domestic geese. That's, yeah, they got a twenty-five yard range. But Canada geese, obviously, are a problem. That's the only thing I could come up, well, harming any geese with drone, I, not, not to leave out that side. Anyway, it, traffic is going to sooner or later eliminate the.
You'll, you'll recall in your research, they also said that, uh, you don't want to move your problem to some, someplace. So your drone moving around the lake is going to move those geese to someone of neighbor. Remember, they said, "That's not really a good plan."
And your point is?
That's what the article said, that's what I, that's what research said that I saw. That it's, it's a, it's an area-wide problem. It may not be just indigenous to our pond.
Well, the advantage of the RC aircraft, to actually take it to different places. Sooner or later, they could mess it, turn up all, all three of those, all four. And there's no waiting.
Ed, no, thank you, you've been very patient, thank you.
I heard about the plan, or the plausible plan.
Your address.
Oh, your address, give them your address.
I'm sorry.
Your address.
I'm sorry, twenty-three oh seven Point Reach.
And your last name was Martin? So, thank you.
And when you, when it talked, it talked about health. I don't know of anyone who's ever gotten sick from the geese. Uh, it talked about the health of the geese, and I've not seen any sick, dying, or dead geese anywhere. Um, and the only geese that I know that really cross the street are those white geese. I did not put that in the newspaper, I'm here for all the snobs, you know, I don't want to see any of them killed. And to me, the big problem is goose poop. I mean, we have a white, a little Scottish terrier. Walking you in the park is a real challenge, because he thinks goose poop is the next best treat. So, you know, I would love to see, you know, the goose poop thing up, but I really think that would help with the. I mean, I see herons fishing in the pond all the time, so there must be something in there.
Oh, there's fish in there.
But if you have, if you plant the goose poop on the ground, it doesn't wash into the pond. The park becomes much more usable, and we save the geese. And I agree that you, sometimes you see a lot of geese, other times you don't see any, you see a few. So how in God's name do you determine what's the resident goose and what isn't, I just don't know. So, I just.
I think with the comment on the resident geese, if I am not an expert, Ed, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not an expert on this at all, but from what I've read, if they're here after a certain time, then they have not migrated back. So then they become a resident goose, and that's, we would not do anything when, at this time of year, when they're, they're migrating. This would be when they're, no.
Okay.
Yes, Gina Coben-Haber, and I live at seventy-one Bramblewood Drive. Yes, I am an animal lover. Matter of fact, my dog does love geese. The, the real matter is, we all freaked out, and I'm part of the breakout committee, because really thought we're going to have slot geese all over. So needless to say, that was not a good thing. Uh, but the reality is, we are in a flight pattern where Canadian geese, let's face it, they like water, they're going to follow. And they do migrate, and sometimes they come back, and sometimes they don't. But the problem, I think, is deeper than that, and I think we have to figure out a way to protect our environment and at the same time not destroy the geese. We live in the middle of a lot of farming areas, but so, granted, all of us can stop ever giving a goose a treat. And kids like to go duck these in the pond, you know, we've done it, we're all guilty. But the reality is, we're surrounded by foreign fields, and let's face it, there's an abundance of food. As long as there's geese, geese are going to hang. I really believe that if they've made this home, and it's like you said, how do you determine who's a resident, who's not a resident? You're right, sometimes I come in the Northgate, I don't see any kind of a duck, not even a mallard. Yet other times, across the bridge, and it seems like the mallards are having a meeting, and the geese left. So I, I don't, it, it's constantly changing. But obviously, we have a lot of waterfowl, and a lot of waterfowl, geese, ducks, et cetera. So I think the scoop thing. So I think the scoop thing, that end of research, end mic research, I think it's probably our best solution initially. It would also keep the fairways clean on, on the, well, let's face it, we did spend an hour and a half worrying about dogs. Might as well deal with goose poop there too. But anyway, the point of the matter is, we can manage the grounds better so that we can make better use of the grounds and not have as much runoff. And if we can also ensure that people aren't feeding the geese, little by little, I do believe the population drops. One thing we'll never be able to do is get the party, and we live in farm territory and we have to accept that. And under those conditions, we have no right to guilt other geese. We just don't. We happened to build ocean finds and we have farm country geese. We didn't know that. And we all live here, we love it here, so, and the farm and the pond is part of it. So, we gotta somehow manage, watch, can manage, without sacrificing wildlife. I just think it's our, it's our responsibility, no.
Anybody else? Okay, any other liaison reports? This has gotten to be a, a very long meeting, but any liaison reports?
Do we get any work done?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
You listen, you're up to important-
MO nine.
Right on my man.
Seven million four hundred fifty-eight degrees. The MO nine. Uh, the second thing is Communications Committee. You are. I'm going to propose a motion by the Director. Or, or look for a solution, anybody? For the, for the Communications Committee. I sent that email, everybody get it?
Yes, Bernie was here earlier, is she, is she gone?
Our Communications Advisory, by a mistake. And, and it wasn't a mistake, I'll take my mistake. I took it over from somebody I don't remember.
It had something to do with tenure, right?
It got gutted, five of the seven members' time is up right now. I'm not in favor of keep rolling people in this thing, but I have a plan, I'm gonna propose, we're gonna move one of the poop-
No, hey, take care.
Three of them are gonna get staggered up to, up to less than a year, just to give us a chance to recruit more members.
It's gonna be a year or less, in other words, if you can get somebody else in sooner-
This is gonna be a special dispensation, is what it is. Cause they can't do another year. It's just gonna be to stagger them a little bit, three people, one for three months, one for six, or not.
Where do you want that on the agenda?
Well, if you're gonna do a motion, you need to get it to-
I think it's old business, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
Nine is the business.
Very old business.
Communications.
Don't make decisions, you have to get a consensus, this is okay, I mean, we just-
Uh, no, because I had a similar situation and I actually had a break submission, my submission.
Okay, then let's do it all. We'll go with the top one.
Dave Blazer, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yep.
But this was a whole committee and the new chairperson who just sat down, say Ron Fisher's place, calls her first meeting and find out, find it, finds out it's heard, oh, Jeff. Maybe Jeff's motion, by the way.
Are you the, you the committee, uh?
Maybe.
No, he's doing it.
Right now, I'm carrying one of Dan's, he's gotta pick a committee that I'm liaising on.
Cause I, I think the Communications Committee is a very, could be a very dynamic.
And what, who are you liaison for?
No, I'm already, um-
Any other reports, any other liaison reports?
I, I just, I'll just hand this stuff to, that's the, uh, minutes from the Ocean City, I mean, uh, Worcester County Commissioner, I'm brain, geez.
It's a long day.
What you got up?
What's this closest thing?
Okay, Anna, and I, I'm not ever gonna do this again, Anna, don't ever put me in this spot, but go ahead, this is it, this is your last chance.
I gotta go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, you do a great job, I'm happy you're leaving Earth Prime. But, today was a catastrophe. Did you hear about it by now? Probably did. Well, at the country club, uh, Bob and Tom had a meeting and they told us, we could play bridge there. It was great, we were getting along great. So today, we go there and the door's locked. And I called three days ago to tell them that we're coming, every Wednesday I called them, it was a catastrophe. They wouldn't let us in the door, I had to call the police station, I had called, uh, how many calls, I can't tell you. These seniors were standing in the dr- in the driveway there, freezing. We couldn't get in, they wouldn't let us in. Nobody informed me that we're moving, or we're going to some other place. I won't go anywhere unless Bob and Tom tell me, cause they told me, we were to play there and we've been getting along great. We keep it clean, we do the best we can, and one of our, and they put all the junk in there, we clean it, we do everything. So now today, they told us, and they're all waiting in the driveway, that we had to go to the community center. The policeman said, "They won't let me open the door because, uh, the community center said we can't play there." I said, "What? They're all here, everybody's there freezing." Well, they finally got there about an hour later, opened the door. Can you believe this, Tom? There's no use for that, Bob. I mean, we work real hard and these seniors look forward to one day of bridge. And that's where we go now, is there any problem why they closed it and not tell me at least? You know, you told me we could play there and we've been doing great, nobody's bothered us. We keep it quiet when they have any meetings, we try to do everything right. But today was a catastrophe. And I called the maintenance because it was all icy there. And he came right away and put the salt down, cause I'm waiting for them to open the door, they wouldn't tell me. So what do you think I should do? I don't even know where we're going next week. And I hope we could stay there because it was so easy. You talk about closing it up and you're opening it up, well, it's there for us to use, why can't we use it? And then there's some, now we go over there, we, we're playing bridge, right? After we get an hour, getting all the carts. Um, they came in, they came in at one o'clock and said we had to leave. I said, "Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me?" We're in the, only, we had eight tables, we have eight tables, and we'll get more when the people come from Florida. Now, I said, "What?" She said, "Well, this other group is coming in." I said, "We are not moving, we had all this confusion, we're playing bridge, having a good time." And these people, these seniors, God bless them, they were so patient. I said, "Don't worry, we'll get it straight there." Well, we start the, as they said, "You gotta go," they all come in, while we're in the middle of the bridge. And I said to them, "Look, don't argue with me, when they talk to administration, they would not leave that room." They stood there, didn't they? They were standing there and I kept saying, "You're disturbing us, it's an eight tables of bridge." Oh, well, I don't wanna complain anymore, I'm very frustrated. And it's been, it's just been great while we were allowed to play there. Now, Bob should have called me or Tom and said, "Anne, you don't play there anymore, go to the community center." Okay, I'm not arguing with them, whatever you tell me to do, we'll do. I'm just upset about these seniors that had to stand there in the freezing, but one guy fell. But he was very nice, he wouldn't complain, I said, "I can't take it anymore, I don't know what's going on."
What? Some of these people are handicapped.
Oh, yeah, they're very handicapped.
And we, we had, they sent us over to the community center. But, we started out at the community center when it opened, then they said they needed the space.
Yeah, we were in the marlin room.
We couldn't play there anymore.
They rented his hours.
So then we went to the country club. And it's just been back and forth, we'll go wherever we're told, but we need a place to go. And you have thirty-two residents and sometimes more that play bridge. We are paying assessment dues, we built the community center, we should have an opportunity to use it.
And what it seems to be that we need your name.
Iris Carey.
Iris?
Yeah.
Eight, well, away. Thank you very much.
So Tom, what do you suggest we do? I don't even know where we're playing next week, nobody told me anything. Do you understand my point? Now, I'm not a, I don't like arguments, I hate it. But today was the last call, you know what happens when I get mad? I feel sorry for these poor people. This one comes out in a wheelchair, she can hardly walk, and you know, it's a shame, we started out in the marlin room. They said that was our room, we worked hard for this community and I like to do fundraisers to help if we need something here. You just tell me, I'll try and work it out. And that's, that's the whole key. And they only come once a week, so these seniors look so much for it, they, they were determined to stay. I said, "Well, maybe we should go home and cover it, worry about it." No. So I thank you for listening to me, I'm sorry to come and complain like this, but please, where do we play next week?
You're putting Bob on the spot, he can't answer that question right now, okay?
I'm waiting to answer.
I got to tell all our people to go home.
Okay.
Can I go to the country club like we've been doing or not? Okay, shall I call you or what?
Yes ma'am, I will call you.
Oh, you call me in the morning so I can call everybody?
I know, they do spoken to, to our Parks Director, she's tried two months, gives you guys back over to the community center, Marlin Room. She blocked the room where you, the heat issue you guys were having over at the country club. She, I talked to her three times about that, for whatever reason you all don't want it, which is fine.
Boy, what do you mean, we don't wanna play there?
Well, that's what I'm saying, why don't you and I sit and talk about, but I'll tell you this, since you're bringing up-
No, we've been doing fine.
I understand, but whoever in the group, dial nine one one today.
Today I did.
Okay.
I'm getting it. When I couldn't get anywhere, they're standing out there freezing.
Why don't we talk?
The community center wouldn't do it, and because the, where did you, I called the secretary, who am I supposed to get a hold of? I did, I called you twice. And the secretary will tell you, you didn't answer, what am I gonna do? So the last thing was the, the police department, they have a queue.
Nine one one's an emergency.
I know it is, and I told them it's not an emergency, but we can't get in the door.
How about we talk tomorrow?
Okay. I'm so sorry, I hated to do this, believe me. My heart goes out to those poor people. And thank you so much for listening to me. Okay, you ready to go home?
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Board. Uh, meeting adjourned.